All set?
Uh, one second, it's still. Okay, we are all set.
Very good. I'd like to welcome everyone to the uh regular meeting of the Waukam County Fire Protection District Number Four Board of Commissioners meeting on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, twelve oh one. So I'll call this order and we'll begin with a roll call. I'm Tim Johnson, Commissioner.
Steve Cooley, Commissioner.
Mark Land, Commissioner.
Jason Vanderbeeck, Fire Chief.
Very good, and um Chair Cooley has asked me to lead us through the meeting today, so I'll do my best to do that, and I'll rely on my fellow commissioners to keep me in my lane. Um, we are gonna deviate a little bit from our agenda, in the interest of uh letting Chief Hewitt get back to business. We're gonna start today with a discussion with Chief Hewitt about the Britton Road Northern Heights annexation. So why don't we kick off with that?
All right, would you, you guys like me to kinda start off with where we're at? Hmm. Um, then I'll be happy to answer any questions, but uh, so yeah, earlier this year, the City Council initiated uh initiated the, well, I should say, earlier this year, citizens brought a petition to the City Council requesting to be annexed. Um, that annexation area roughly is um, what's left of East McLeod over to Britton Road and then north up around Station Twelve. Um, so it's kind of a, and for the most part, it goes down Britton Road, but there's a couple of, I think there's a couple of small parcels on the east side of Britton Road that were also included in there. Um, so the citizens brought that petition to the City Council. The City Council chose to initiate that process, and what that means, when the City Council initiates the process, um, it basically, it, they are instructing our planning department to uh, review the petition, ensure that it's, that it, it's valid, that we have enough um, community members that signed on to the petition, and then that starts what I'll call a deep dive by the planning department into looking at the cost of that annexation. So initiation does not mean that the city is gonna annex anything. It just means that they gave direction, council gave direction to city staff to take a, a deep look at all the finances involved, what are the impacts going to be, and that kinda process. So we go through that deep dive, and at some point, planning department will generate a report that they'll take back to council and say, here's the pros and cons of doing this annexation, here's what it's gonna, what it's gonna do, here's what it's gonna cost, here's how many housing units we might be able to get in, here's what industry we might be able to get in, whatever the, whatever those impacts are. They'll, they'll provide, they'll do that full report, they'll give it back to the City Council, at which time the City Council would then vote to either do it or to not do it. Um, or in the case of some of them, or put it on hold in perpetual, there's, there's a one Meridian Klein Kelly annexation, the District Four is also a party to that's been on hold, I think, for a decade or more. Um, I think it was on hold before I started working at the county, uh, like, for the two of you that can remember when I started working at the county. Um, yeah, so that's, that's where the process is at. Um, as a fire department, we, you know, I have provided um comments to the planning department that were basically, hey, if we annex it, you know, right now, uh, the area that they're talking about is serviced by District Four through their contract with North Waukam out of Station Twelve. Um, if we annex that area, our intention would be that Station Twelve continue to provide services in that area and um either through our auto aid agreement or through some other kind of arrangement, that they would still provide those frontline services out there. Um, we did have, we have some concerns on the fire prevention side of our house. Um, this is just some longstanding, Bellingham is understaffed our Fire Marshal's Office, and so we've also put in there that we would need an additional, some additional help there. Um, so, that's kinda where we're at. Now, um, in there, or we also called out the nineteen ninety-seven agreement, um, that says if we annex that area, we would pay whatever the loss of revenue to District Four is, we would pay that loss of revenue to District Four for three years. Um, and then I think I've also finished up in there that District Four is currently in a contractual relationship with North Waukam, and there is the possibility that District Four might want to change who they're in a contractual relationship with. Um, and kinda left it open-ended there, um, but but really, that, at the end of the day, it doesn't, you know, whether it's North Waukam or District Twenty-One contracting with District Four, or whether it's City of Bellingham contracting with District Four, it's still gonna be District Four operating that fire station, and that fire station continuing to serve the people that it was built for. Um, or, you know, the people that, that live in that area, so um so that's kinda where we are in that process. Um, and I, I, I will, on the, on the impact, the financial impact piece, um, also just kinda walk you through um, how that works when we do have an annexation. So in the first year of the annexation, um, a letter goes over to the assessor's office, and basically, the short version is, hey, you know, this money that would normally be collected by District Four from this area, divert that over to the city. So in the first year, the district does actually lose that revenue, and instead, that revenue gets replaced by, we, we basically Bellingham Fire Department pays that back to you under our nineteen ninety-seven agreement. In the second year, um, the second and third year, we would, we still make those payments. Um, so let's say the loss of revenue was a hundred thousand dollars. We're still gonna pay you all three years, the loss of revenue. Uh, but the reality of it is, is with your, um, you guys are so far under the dollar fifty cap that not only will you get that hundred thousand in the second and third year from the city, but you could actually still collect the full amount that you collected the previous year, uh, because it, it when that revenue goes away, it doesn't change your highest lawful levy amount. Um, it's kinda bizarre, um, how that works, but i- i- if that makes any, any sense to you, would it, you know, if, if you guys collected two and a half million this year, you'll still, a year later, you'll still be able to take two and a half million plus one percent, um, would be the max you could take. Um, so, so the revenue, you know, the, the three-year rollout that's in the ninety-seven agreement was always meant to be able to give districts enough time to to stay stable, um, if they lost revenue to the city. Um, but the reality of it is, and I, I, I speak this as the chief of Fire District Eight who went through this here not too long ago. Actually, in the second and third years, we, we actually brought in more revenue the second and third years, because we were able to levy our normal amount, plus then get the payment from the city, so. So that's kind of what I've got for you, um, just kinda the status of where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Bill, what happens after year three?
Well, uh, again, hopefully by year three, the departments, again, still have, I mean, ha- you're able to advance your revenue enough to, to collect, collect that amount that you were, like, like it never happened, basically. Um, you know, through, through that increase. Um, as far as how the revenue looks, yeah. Um, that was my question. Um, is it, Bill, is it an unusual scenario to have a fire hall inside the city limits, but run by somebody other than a city entity? Is that, is that a little bit unusual? Um, surprisingly, no. So, um, so there is a, what is now a, uh, I think it's a kid's world on Home Road there, um, i- if you can think of, uh, Baker View and Northwest. Yeah. Um, and Home Road kinda goes back, the old Jerry Chambers Backway and to the north. So that, uh, what's, that kid's world that's there is actually a Fire District Eight fire station, or was a Fire District Eight fire station that operated inside the city limits for a number of years before they shut it down and, and um moved out of it and sold it off. Um, and actually, uh, the Baker View and James Street, you know, District Four's fire station that was Baker View and James Street operated for a while inside the city limits um, after the Baker View-James annexation. Um, they operated there for a little while. I mean, ultimately, they've, um, that was when they purchased the property out on Smith Road and, and um, sold that, but it's not, it's not unheard of. It's not super common, but it's not unheard of. Both of those scenarios happen, and, and I think the other big difference, though, now versus then, too, is that you know, when those were happening, those, both those stations, um, District Four, Station Three, and what was originally District Eight, Station Two, I believe, um, both of those stations were all volunteer stations, right, and and the volunteers didn't care where the city lines were, they've, you know, the, the stations were located more on where the volunteers lived than they did on actual, uh, providing services out. Um, and, and both, so here, you know, Station Twelve was sighted in a spot where we all agreed back in the nineties was a good site for a station that would serve that community going forward. Um, Station Twenty-One up in Geneva, and I, I know that one just from being on this District Two side of it back in the day. Station Twenty-One in Geneva sighted the same way. We've, we, we cited those buildings and we built them so that they would serve that community regardless of whether it was city or county jurisdiction. We built them in those locations so that they were best suited for the overall picture of the needs of the community. Um, so it, it, I know down in King County, um, it's, uh, getting to the, especially like the east side kinda metro area there, um, Bothell, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, um, you do see a lot of that where, you know, all the lines, uh, the, all the lines are erased as far as response goes, and the closest units go regardless of whose jurisdiction it is, and um, and as annexations happen, it really doesn't change that model, and in fact, I think, I believe, I believe the City of Redmond, um, City of Redmond also operates a fire district, uh, down there, and I believe one of their stations is actually in the City of Bellevue now. And it's still operating that way today. I mean, it's been in for a while and uh, probably a decade or better, and they're still operating that way.
Okay. Station Seventy-two, where I work, has actually been annexed into the City of Linden. So, it's.
Yeah, I forgot about that one.
Hmm. So as far as who provides coverage, uh, sorry, Tim, did you have a question?
No, go ahead, Steve.
So, Bill, as far as who provides primary coverage, um, maybe this is a silly question, I'm just trying to, to map it in my mind. So the city annexes that area, and then does that area then become the primary responsibility of the Bellingham Fire Department? And we would respond to that area under mutual aid if you were not able to? Is that?
Well, we actually have an automatic aid agreement in place already, right, that says we're gonna send the closest fire truck or aid car regardless of jurisdiction. So, I, and I'm gonna pick on your house, Steve, because I know, I know where you guys are on Britton there. Um, no matter who is operating that station, Station Twelve will still be the first station to respond down to your place on Britton Road. Um, whether that's, a- and really, and again, this, this was some of the smart planning we did in the nineties when we cited these stations and said, hey, it's gonna serve the area. It's not, it's not that it serves District Four, or that it serves BFD. What will change? Um, so what's funny is that the run card, or the order of what stations go there won't change. If it annex tomorrow, that wouldn't change at all. The only thing that would change is um, instead of getting the North Waukam Battalion Chief um, and writing a North Waukam fire report, you'll get the Bellingham Battalion Chief and we'll write a Bellingham fire report. Um, but as far as the first response and that entry-level service, that doesn't, that does not change. Um, now, I, I, I'm, I'm saying this, but I'm also, you know, very cognizant of the fact, again, at some point, um, you know, whether you stay in a contractual relationship with North Waukam or you, you decide that it makes more sense to be in a contractual relationship with South Waukam, or Fire District One, or the City of Bellingham, whoever it is, that, to me, that's a different conversation to some extent. You know, because it, it really doesn't re-matter, matter on the response end. Um, the, as long as we're, as long as whoever is running that is we're operating the same level of service, and that's, that was part of the auto aid agreement was the agreement that you would staff that station twenty-four hours a day with a a train captain, a train driver, and a trained firefighter. And so as long as we're all meeting those level of service, um, yeah, it doesn't matter whether they're coming from a Bellingham station or a District Four station or a District Twenty-One station. We know that we, we've set this bar, this is the level of service that we get, and we'll, we'll, yeah.
Okay.
That's, and that's something that, um, that's been in place for, uh, years now uh, with, it's got, it's District, uh, Twenty-One, District Four, District Seven, and City of Bellingham, with that auto aid agreement, where really, we've, we've dropped the borders between those those government entities, its closest unit responds and most needed unit responds. So, for example, this morning, um, Chief Hewitt, uh, the city's ladder truck was on a call. They had a fire that required a ladder truck, and District Seven's crew, the crews, their ladder truck was out on another call, so it pulled um, Station Sixty-three, which ladder sixty-three, down to the city um, to respond. So it grabs the next needed unit, no matter where they're located in the county. Does that affect response time sometimes, but closest unit goes, is what we're seeing.
Yeah.
That it doesn't matter where you go or who you pay taxes to.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I will acknowledge, too, that very much in our auto aid agreement, it does not, it, it does talk about the fact that we will not our auto aid agreement does not relieve us of our responsibilities to work with District Four over annexation issues. So I, I, I wanna be clear, like, I'm not sitting back going, hey, I'm getting Scott, you know, I'm, I'm getting free service in here. Um, you know, that does not, not relieve us from, from negotiating over the impacts of um, annexations. Again, this one's small enough that, um, it um, the ninety-seven agreement talks about, or it's big enough that it triggers that three-year point, so we got some guidance to work from. Um, the other thing that's kinda out there is that, um, in that ninety-seven agreement is the cumulative effects of all annexations. And this is the one that, that you've probably heard both me and Chief Vanderbeeck say that nobody, unfortunately, in ninety-seven, nobody really identified how we were gonna calculate that. And there's a couple different me- methods, and one of the methods, you'll never get to sixty percent. Um, one of the methods, we got to sixty percent a long time ago. Uh, and one of the methods, we're probably right on the border. So, so that's, you know, that's the other piece. So really, but I think we're in a position where um, I, I mean, there's two things. One, I, I'm not sure whether or not this annexation's gonna get legs or not. There's there's, um, while the fire department stuff, I, I feel is easily i- i- easily within our grasp, um, because of our existing agreements. Um, there, um, the need for additional law enforcement resources and um, street and other infrastructure resources for the amount of housing units that the city would gain, I don't know if it's gonna pencil out. Um, I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it's not gonna, you know, I, but I don't know if it I just don't know. It'll be interesting to see when the study comes out, um.
So Chief, going back to the planning review process, um, do you have a sense of how long of a process this is, and do they actually come to you and ask you for like a thumbs up or thumbs down from a, a fire department perspective?
Yeah, so they came to us and uh, they came to every department head in the city and said, send us, um, send us your concerns over the annexation um, and what the impacts would be. And we had a deadline. Um, and I'm looking, my, uh, the memo that I sent them was August fifth. Um, and and I'm trying to remember, because I had some vacation in August, and I, I had a deadline that was happening somewhere in that vacation, so I think back, by the end of August, they should have had all of those inputs from the department heads. And then the planners are currently combine, or putting all those inputs into one big document. Usually, when they get that big document, they'll send a draft back out to the department heads. I have not seen that draft come back out. So, uh, you know, as far as timeline for when they'll get in front of council, I'm not sure if they'll, if they'll make it this year, you know, if they'll make it in front of them in, in like November uh, timeframe. There is, I think there is a timeline in the process where, uh, but I we don't do enough of these, that I don't have the timelines memorized.
Okay. Are you, are you able to share what your recommendation was, or is that confidential at this time?
No, I'm, I am, I, I'm happy to, um, I am happy to share the document that I sent to the planning department, um. And I'm gonna let's see here. Uh, sorry, I got a weird thing that keeps popping up in the middle of my screen there. Um, there we go, I, I sent, sent it off to Jason to, um, if Jason, if you can forward it to the commissioners there, but I can, let me just see. Um, yeah, and so again, I don't say thumbs up or thumbs down, I just say here are the facts, and again, the facts is I told him, you know, we, we have a current auto aid agreement that uses the closest companies. We have the nineteen ninety-seven agreement that talks about how they're dealt with. Um, and then basically go on to say that, you know, that area would continue, is currently served by Station Twelve, would continue to be served that way, and that the resources there meet our current level of service standard for the city. Um, called out the fact that they need to, that prevention-wise, we don't have enough inspectors to handle it, but, um, that's kinda separate from that, that's more about us and the county fire marshal than us in District Four. Um, also just identify that, you know, it is more than five percent, so that triggers the three-year. Um, and actually, the number in there, as it stands right now, is two hundred and eight thousand a year, is actually what the impact would be. Um, hey, there you go. Um, yeah, and so the, so, so the first paragraph is just identifying, like I said, that, that auto aid agreement and that we have the, or we have these two agreements. The second one talks about, you know, you guys meeting the level of service and that station meets our needs and the life safety issues. The last one's kinda the kicker, though, that third paragraph is really the the kicker, which is, you know, it is gonna be more than five percent, so that triggers the three-year payout. Um, and then, I, just calling it out, that this annexation may also trigger the commissioners to request us to contract for service. Um, and that the it's unclear how you guys would wanna proceed on that. Um, but the amount of, I'm also saying the amount of revenue that you guys are collecting would more than likely be enough to pay for us to provide services if we were asked. Um, I can tell you our, our, my finance folks and my council are probably not gonna believe that last sentence. Um, because they're, they they there's a lot of misunderstanding about the contract for service with District Eight and, um, how that all evolved, and, and there were, frankly, there were some costs that we didn't anticipate that hit after we, uh, merged District Eight in with the or did the functional consolidation, I should say. Uh, with District Eight, there were costs that, uh, we didn't envision. Um, you, we, District Eight still had a viable volunteer slash part-time program that um, we were counting on to continue that didn't continue. Um, and so, so the uh, that's just to say that my, my finance folks in our council are a little gun shy of um, consolidation, um, right now, or contracting for services, because they, it's taken quite a bit of time for us to get to where District Eight is really paying the full freight on their contract for service, so.
I've sent, uh, everybody a copy of this email, or forward this email to Chief Hewitt, too.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Hewitt? Mark or Steve?
No, not at this time. Thanks, Chief.
All right, and I, um, as I hear more too, I mean, uh, Chief Vanderbeeck and I are in contact fairly regularly, and as we hear more, we'll certainly share that along, and, um, and if you guys have questions too in between meetings, don't hesitate to reach out, so.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chief Hewitt. Appreciate you coming in and explaining all that.
Yeah, thanks for putting me at the top of the list, so I get, I get a twenty-minute break before the next meeting, so.
Very good.
See y'all later. Jason, I'll see you. Jason, I'll see you at three.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Bell's on.
All right, um, do we wanna save your discussion for? Back in the regular unfinished business agenda where we had that item, where you wanna, anyone have any more discussion at this point?
Just a comment that obviously, um, you know, and then I know that wasn't intentional in his memo there to the city, but the annexation team, but. Yeah, that. It, it didn't really imply that we would have the full amount of our revenue to spend on. On a contract with the city, but, but, you know, of course, we have constituents that are, are many constituents outside of that annexation. That that funding needs to support. So, yeah, it's gonna be interesting, an interesting process that we, what we go through here, so.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, well then, why don't we at this point go back to our, uh, agenda? And, uh, that would, next item up would be the public comment, uh, period. Uh, do we have anyone? Joining us today, Chief, for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, then I will. Open and close the public comment period at twelve thirty-two. And we'll move on to, um, our next item, which is approval of consent agenda. All matters within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Board of Commissioners for review. Are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion of the board with no separate discussion. If a separate discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. And placed on the regular agenda by request. And this month on the consent agenda, we have the meeting minutes from our last board meeting, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Yes, staff reports. We have a financial report which shows total revenues in August of fifteen thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars. Forty-two cents. And total expenditures for September of seven hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. We also have voucher payroll and benefits with. Direct deposit payroll of six hundred forty-four dollars. A monthly expenditure voucher of seven hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. So does anyone have, uh, an item they'd like to pull out, discuss separately from the consent agenda? Okay.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you for the second. Uh, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, so that passes. We'll move on to unfinished business. Um, so we had our, our discussion with Chief Hewitt. And, uh. I imagine we'll be having more discussions about this. Um, I would like the opportunity to kind of read through that memo a little bit more. Um, next item up was the Britmook Station twelve exterior project. And Chief, do you have any, any comments about that today?
Um, no, we'll, we're continuing to work on that, um. There's been, we've kind of encountered some pickups internally here, but, um, plan to get that kind of back on track. And hopefully with, uh, summer being over, we can get some exterior. People that do exterior work to come take a look and actually bid on it. So that's, that will be the goal for the October meeting is to have, have a couple bids. So we can get some updated numbers.
Okay, any questions or comments about that? All right. Uh, fire engine bid?
Same thing, wait for one more, one more, uh, company to get back to us and October will be the goal.
Okay, very good. No other comments? That case, we'll move on to new, and we have the Wacom County Mutual Aid Agreement. That, uh, Chief forwarded to us a couple of weeks ago. Um, that requires us to. Review and approve today, believe.
Yes, uh, that's just, uh, it's the boilerplate agreement. It's been in place for a long time. This is just an updated version of it. Um, I'm actually, we are the last district to, uh, review and hopefully sign it, uh, so I'm hopeful that it will pass today. And it's just, it just, um. Memorializes things we do every day with, with mutual aid countywide.
Can I, uh, have a motion to approve the? County Mutual Aid Agreement?
Yeah, I would move to approve the Wacom County Mutual Aid Agreement.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any, any other discussion about the agreement?
Oh.
Okay, all those in favor of proving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that passes. Um. And that takes us to correspondence. I did not see new correspondence other than the response to the resident. Um, that we talked about last month.
Yeah, was there a page cut out of here, um, on the, our packet? It, it sort of just, or was that the entire?
There, there are, there are a few lines that were cut off the end of that.
Okay, I figured it.
Um, sorry about that. I will forward that. Against, or I or Jenny will forward that in its entirety. I didn't realize it had been cut off.
Yeah, no worries. I figured because it just sort of stopped, so.
Yep.
Yeah. No, it wasn't quite that abrupt.
Right, I figured you would, you would have at least signed off, Tim, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's about, yeah, that'd be great if we could, uh, get the rest of that in there.
Okay.
And I, I'm not aware of any other correspondence. For us to.
No, sir.
Address this month. Okay. And we'll move on to, um, next item announcement. We have a board meeting planned for. The fifteenth of October, which is actually Tuesday. Next month. Um, how does that look on people's schedule?
Looks good to me.
Okay.
You, can you remind me, um? I mean, yeah, no, 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 never mind. I was thinking of a different. Different board, um, yeah, that, uh, put that in right now.
You're on too many boards.
Well, yeah. Maybe.
Okay, good. That looks good to me as well, so fifteenth for our next board meeting. And then, um. We have an item about a, uh, District twenty-one joint planning meeting.
Um, yeah, as, as you may be aware, District twenty-one, the levy failure, we've kind of been doing some. Some Saturday planning sessions and, uh, the District twenty-one board would like to invite you to. Um, October twelfth at Station sixty-one in Blaine on Odell Road, uh, starting at nine AM. Um, to have a, uh, a joint planning session. Uh, the morning set, the morning piece will be, um, the District twenty-one attorney. Coming to talk to us about some subjects that the District twenty-one Commissioners and I have asked for some more research and legal opinion on. And then after that would be discussions between both boards. Um, about just bringing, bringing you up to date where District twenty-one is, what their thoughts are about. How we're dealing with, with our issues in District twenty-one. Um, one thing that I can make abundant, just so you, in case you're wondering, um, nothing's changing for District four. District four, their voters paid. They're, they're paying full boat, so that's what they get. The changes are happening in District twenty-one. They just want you to be aware of them.
So I, uh. If I heard you say it's Saturday, October twelfth, I'll be in the air coming back from Florida, so I'll unfortunately. Not be able to be there for that.
Okay, I would say I'm sorry, but. Coming back from Florida, so.
Yeah.
My calendar looks clear, so I should be able to be there.
Yeah, very good. I'm, uh, similar situation as Commissioner Lynn. I'll be flying back from Texas. That day.
Great.
I will definitely be there.
Great.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Cooley.
Yeah, we'll be leaning on you, Steve, as usual.
Yeah.
Well, not lately, but thank you.
Okay, um. Agenda about it, agenda items for next meeting. Say anyone have anything that you would like on the agenda, um?
Um, I just, you know, carry over again from last month and this meeting, just keep our foot on the gas on the, on the building. Renovation update and the, and the fire truck, and obviously. We'd need, uh, an update on whatever happened at the joint meeting.
As well as the meeting that, uh, Chief's going to today about the study, we'll probably wanna talk about that as well.
Yeah, the, the county consolidation study, uh, the kickoff meeting is today. Uh, I'll be there representing both four and twenty-one, so.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. All sounds good. Uh, signing of documents, we have documents at the, uh, station for us today, Chief.
Okay, and a pen.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the little things.
Very good. Uh, anything else for the good of the order?
You did a great job, Tim.
I agree. Thank you very much for, for sharing this one.
Absolutely happy to help out. On that case, we'll consider ourselves adjourned.
If you all can get a text once you get, uh, docs signed.
Yep.
We'll do, great. Rachel Cooley, if you need assistance with that, let me know.
I've got a ride, so thank you. Thank you, but it will be about thirty or four, so.
Okay.
Good day.